City council meeting tonight, Tuesday, September 17th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. I'll call the meeting to order. The prayer will be by our planning director, Mr. Scott Ankerson, and the pledge of allegiance will be by Councilman Gilat. Please stand and silence all cell phones and devices.
Father God, we bow before you and give you honor, give you praise, follow in all the glory, Lord. Thank you for your presence here tonight, Lord's Lord. We ask for your discernment, God, and wisdom, Lord, as we attend city business, Lord. And thank you for your protection out of our fire and our public works, Father, our police, Lord. Just keep them safe and keep them coming home safe to their families, in favor, Lord. And thank you most of all for your Son, Jesus Christ, and his sacrifice for our sins on Calvary's cross. We ask all this in his name. Amen.
Please join me in honor of our country and in the sign of the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Gilat, and thank you, Mr. Ankerson. That brings us to our agenda order of approval. Do we have any changes, Mr. Ankerson?
Yes, Mayor, your consent agenda item number one, we'd like to have the approval of the high school fireworks. They were approved at the last meeting. Also, consent agenda item number 11, there's just a careful error, need to remove. We were good, so we'll do a sentence.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda order approval with changes?
So move.
Motion by Councilman Gilat, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Councilman George?
Aye.
Councilman? Motion carries. That brings us to our announcement by Mr. Ankerson.
Thank you, Mayor. Today's Thursday will be September 26th, starting at 11:00 AM at the former Singing River Mall property. City of Goshay's Cruising Through the Decades event will be October 6th, starting at 12:00 PM at the former Singing River Mall property. Our outdoor movie night featuring teenage mutant ninja turtles, Mutant Mayhem, will be October 18th, starting at 6:30 PM at the City of Goshay's Sportsplex. And the Goshay Mulligan Music Festival will be October 19th, from 9:00 AM until 6:00 PM at the former Singing River Mall property.
Thank you, Mr. Ankerson. We don't have any presentation agenda. That brings us to our business agenda. Consideration for abatement at 2812 Fairview Drive, Goshay, Mississippi, by Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankerson.
Yes, sir, Mayor, thank you. This property has a mobile home, it's dilapidated, has no active water since 2023. The primary structure doesn't look like it has any reasonable, formidable repairs that are possible to the structure. It's dilapidated beyond repair, in other words. The landscaping is unkept, it's overgrown, windows are broken out. There have been vagrants living in the structure. So basically, code enforcement is asking council to approve the demolition of this structure, clearing the lot due to the public nuisance and hazard. So staff recommends the city council approve this abatement, assess the administrative fee, and have the property demolished and cleared after the 10-day statutory appeal period of the date of cancellation of purpose. I've included photos in case of history for review, and I'll answer any questions they have.
Thank you, Mr. Ankerson. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number one? Do we have a motion by council? And whoever makes the motion, make sure you stipulate any fees or fines and how they are to be collected or assessed.
I'll make a motion that we approve the abatement of 2812 Fairview Drive, and the administrative fee about 50% or half of the cost. But it's two of the, the two options right there, whichever is greater to be assessed via lien.
We got a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman?
No comments.
Councilman Gilat?
I'm sure we'll be doing something with these abatement properties. Every day you see them. Thank you very much.
Councilman George? I mean, Jackson, I'm sorry, Councilman Jackson?
No discussion.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
I just want to thank the city staff working on this one, and I know the residents around there will be grateful because they have been complaining to the city staff about this property, so they will be glad. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Gilat. All in favor? Councilman George? Councilman Jackson? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two. Consideration for an abatement at 7921 Patunia Drive, Goshay, Mississippi, by Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankerson.
Yes, Mayor, this looks like the previous we just heard. This mobile home on the property is condemned, is beyond reasonable repair. There have been four code enforcement cases on this property since 2022 for trash and debris, also for vagrants living in Winnebago that was on the property. This Winnebago has no motor, no transmission, it's just basically a body of a shell of an old Winnebago. So the neighbors have reported even fear for their safety due to drug activity alleged and for vagrants living in the structure. So code enforcement is asking council to approve this abatement to demolish the primary structure, clean the property, to eliminate the public nuisance and safety hazard. Staff recommends the city council approve this abatement, assess the administrative fee, and have the property demolished and cleared, have the statutory 10-day appeal period of the date of cancellation of purpose. Included the photos of the property and code enforcement.
Thank you, Mr. Ankerson. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number two?
Yes, sir. I would like the opportunity to take care of it.
Come to the podiums, take your first and last name and your address.
My name is Casey Long. My address is 1111 Zero.
Can you speak? I'm sorry. Can you hear Teresa for the record?
1111 Ten, Ben Hamilton, Murder, Mobile, Atlanta.
Okay, and you? Go ahead, we got three minutes.
Okay. Well, I got a letter in August and was going to take care of it, take care of the state. I didn't know the property was in such disarray. But I'd like the opportunity to take care of it. The estate is tied up and with a lawyer right now. What y'all asking me to do?
How long, how long do you think it would take for you to start cleaning up the property?
Well, I've already made some improvements. I pushed all the trash and debris up, you know, right after I talked with Patrick. Thank you.
What we, what we've done in the past, just to give you an idea, is we've approved the abatement, but if you're making the improvements to the property, they won't take action. And what'll happen is they'll cancel out the abatement over time. But more or less, we're doing that to a certain case. We've had people come in front of us and say, we're going to take care of it, and nothing happens.
Yeah.
But the planning department will definitely work with you. You're making improvements and they'll cancel out the abatement.
Right. Well, I already, like I said, I pushed it all up. The mobile home was there. I did the mobile home, the debris, I did push up the tractor. And, you know, I'd like enough time to get it cleaned up over there. The mobile home is totally disarrayed. I mean, I think we got some squatters over there that come in and just tore it up according to the letters and I was.
Do you own the property?
I've been involved with the property in 15 years.
He said it, Councilman Anderson, he said he was in air, it's tied up and out of state.
And the rest of the property will be sold and the estate also will go to my brother's heirs, which was on the property, you know, until two years ago.
So you plan on getting rid of the trailer?
Everything, it's nothing, there's nothing to do with it. It's a total disaster.
Do you?
Never will I know five years ago.
Mr. Long?
Any more?
So real fast, so you, did you contact Mr. Fagan at all? You did not?
Well, I did, I contacted him. I got the first letter in the first of August. I contacted him and made him over there and had him condemned.
Okay. So, like Councilman College? Okay, like Councilman College said, what do you think your timeframe? If he was to go ahead and vote on it and then 60 days?
Give me about a month or so to finish cleaning it up. I mean, I'm going to take everything out of the trailer, you know, whatever we got to do to get it all from the attorney, I mean, the property sold.
So we go ahead and approve this Mr. Dennis like we have before, and he works with y'all, we're not going to do nothing as long as he's making progress. Yeah, we're going to give you, we're, no, we're going to give you, I'm just trying to figure out for years. So, so we're looking out for our end and you because we had to do a public notice. So I don't want us to have to re-advertise. We don't want to cost taxpayers money and have to re-advertise again.
I will direct code enforcement to not move forward with the abatement as long as the improvements are being made to the property.
What we'll do is we'll put a stipulation of 30 days to start action on there, and then thereafter, then we can go through there.
Is that fair to you?
That was very fair.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
I think if you have extenuating circumstances of cleaning it up and you work with gentlemen over there.
Absolutely. I think the tractor was pushed all up. I got most of them free out outside for the mayor's sake.
Communication is key with the planning department, that's it.
Well, and you working with them saves the taxpayers money of Goshay, and we don't have to wait and collect their money itself, so. We would rather that than have to wait on the money, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comments? Do we have a motion by council? Whoever makes the motion, make sure you stipulate any fees, assessments, and how they're to be collected.
I make the motion we approve the abatement of 7921 Patunia Drive. Withhold any action for 30 days to talk with the property owner for a discussion of his planning commission, and that penalty be assessed to the property in the amount of $1,500, 50% actual cleaning cost of the property, which is, whichever is more to be placed via lien on the property if the abatement is to go through.
We got a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
We got a second by Councilman Alvin. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
We got a motion by Councilman College, second by Councilman Alvin, all in favor? Councilman George? Councilman Jackson? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number three. Consideration of a conditional use major permit that would allow a self-service mini warehouse in a C3 community commercial zoning district located on Highway 90, Goshay, Mississippi, GPC number 24-32-CU, by Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankerson.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department has received this request from Omega Holdings LLC for this conditional use that would allow a self-service mini warehouse in the C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District. Some background on the property. General features, it's possibly 3.69 acres. The existing structure on the property was permitted at a car wash many years ago. Construction began, was not completed at the car wash. Not too long ago, this property owner did make some improvements on that structure, finished some of the exterior, finished on the building and is now using it for a, you know, personal storage or contractor storage. The listing, I mean, the comprehensive plans feature land use designation for this property is low impact in market. I've included the review criteria for making conditional use as outlined in our report along with the applicant's response and the staff's findings. The recommendation from the planning commission is the city council approve the conditional use major with stipulation the project contains a decorative fence erected around all areas of the public right of way. City council may approve the conditional use major, approve the conditional use major which changes, or deny the conditional use major. Do you have a front of the S R P meeting and the application packet? You have other potential to not be.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number three? Well.
Do you want to speak, Mr.?
Are you going to want to speak, or let's just see if it goes like planning commission and move forward, Donovan? State your name and address and.
My name is Donson Cruz, 37 Pine Drive in Ocean Springs. I won't bore you with details unless you live in here. But I do want to bring your attention to, I got my number, page number, this time, page six, on this packet. There was a lot of discussion at the planning commission meeting about fences and buildings and climate controls and all this various details that I really was not prepared to get into. So I got the property owner and kind of put together this page that kind of shows what our intentions are. First of all, though, he does intend to put a perimeter fence around the entire property. And if you look at the bottom right-hand corner of this page, it shows you what he actually intends to construct, which is a decorative aluminum-style fencing that mimics the old wrought iron that have brick columns every 42 feet. So it does add a good bit of detail and attractiveness to this building, to these buildings. Also, on the north side of the property, he is going to put a climate-controlled storage facility, which although, to give them, they have limited access, you typically come in one door and you access a unit internally, so you don't see all the units doors on the outside. So the northern property, which is most adjacent to Dela Point Drive, is also going to be brick. So it's going, this site, we assume, is going to be most visible from residential areas and wanted to make it more attractive. But in a nutshell, that's the plan. What we, I have gone through, and it does imply with the conditional use major, traffic on a mini warehouse is one of the least intense or least, you know, for traffic generation. So I think it will be a good bit for the building, of course. And it's pretty much been vacant since it was never even constructed back in 2004. So I do hope you will vote to approve this, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion by council to accept the planning commission's recommendation and approve a conditional use major permit that would allow a self-service mini warehouse in the C3 Community Commercial Zoning District located on Highway 90, GPC number 24-32-CU, PID number 81831440.000. Motion by Councilman Gilat, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
Brad, something's happening with that building. It's been sitting there for a long time, nothing happened.
The owner does intend to make it attractive and his building is actually right there on the same property, so he wants to leave his backyard.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson?
Yeah, like Councilman Alvin said, that's great to see something going in there, and this is looking nice with that fence like that. The main building that was going to be the car wash, what is that going to be?
It's going to be a decorative advantage storage. Yes, sir. This is a kind of an image that he's put together that will show his way.
Like big RVs or something?
I don't think they're going to do RVs. He's going to, it's going to be internal and maybe some more units on the backside of it. But instead of, if he's a big unit for RV, it's going to be divided into two separate.
Oh, I see. Like air-conditioned, climate-controlled?
I don't think those are going to be AC, but the ones on the north side are going to be climate-controlled.
Roof on it's two different colors. Is it going to be painted one color or were they repaired the roof?
Yes, he's, the applicant, the tenant is, the owner of the property is shaking his head, yes, Councilman Anderson.
That's all I got, thanks, sir.
Councilman College?
Yeah, I know the owner is here, he did a beautiful job with the building and stuff like that. I do have one question as a possibility. I do appreciate the climate control is going to be a brick on the traditional metal building side that's closest to Highway 90, that's close to your building. Would it be possible to do an upgraded facade on that so it's better viewable or it's more aesthetically pleasing to look from?
Jesse, can you state your name for the record, first and last name?
Sure. My name is Jesus Alcera, Jesse Alcera. My address is 1299 Atlantic Ocean Springs.
Yeah, just that one traditional metal building that's on the southern portion of it, that's just southeast of the existing car wash buildings? Can we do an upgraded facade on that possibly, since it's closest to Highway 90, it would be visible from that?
Sure. One of the things that I wanted to bring up is, if you have any suggestions, if you have any recommendations, I mean, I can write them in my email and you can email me everything, you know, whatever suggestions you have. And when, when, when we prepare the final drawing, then we'll, you know, we'll incorporate all that. And yeah, I mean, I want to have.
Yeah, the other, the other buildings are fine out there, it's just I'm trying to keep where it's most visible and stuff like that. So would you mind if I amended the motion to include an upgraded facade on that one specific building? I'll wait till the rest of the comments go through and then, that's all I have.
Thank you, Jesse. Councilman Gilat?
All I can say is finally, something's going to be done to that property. That thing has been there too long, looking like it has. And I appreciate y'all taking the opportunity to improve it.
That's it. Thank you, Councilman Gilat. Councilman Jackson?
Yeah, I just appreciate that, since that has been there for some time, and thank you for your investment in Goshay.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman George?
No discussion.
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion to require a upgraded facade for deciding on the southernmost metal building.
Second.
We got an amendment by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion on the amendment?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Gilat?
No.
Councilman Jackson?
No.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
Okay. We have a motion by council, amendment by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Anderson, all in favor? Councilman George? Councilman, um, George?
No comment.
Are we, we're voting, is that a yes on the amendment? Councilman Jackson voted? Okay. We, motion carries on the amendment. Now we are to the original motion. We had a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman, I mean, Councilman Gilat, a second by Councilman Anderson, all in favor? Councilman George? Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Jesse, we thank you for your working with our planning department, you and Mr. Scruggs and your investment here, and your building is nice there, and we look forward to you making Gateway to Goshay looking nicer. So thank you for your beautification. That brings us to business agenda item number four. Consideration of a special exception that would allow the sale of sheds to be located in a town center zoning district located at 2101 Old Spanish Trail, Goshay, Mississippi, GPC number 24-33-SC, by Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankerson.
Yes, Mayor, the planning department has received this request from J. Douglas and NGA Hallen for this special exception that allows sale of sheds in the PC Town Center Zoning District. Some background, the general features, it's 1.7 acres, there's public water, there's water surfaces available, the location. The comprehensive plans feature land use designation at this town center. I've included in the discussion section of your memo, the criteria for a special exception is outlined in our report and so long as the applicant's responses and the staff's findings. I will remind council that special exceptions do not go with the land, they go with the owner.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Actually, the recommendation was not adding to this memo of vandalism from the planning commission. I'll get back to you. See what their recommendation was.
Yeah, it said, let's see, with the following stipulations, the front-facing side of Old Spanish Trail shall have a decorative fence to be aesthetically pleasing for the neighborhood across the street. Hours of operation to shop for sheds will be from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Density of property as a whole, including parking, road sheds, and existing sheds will be 70%. Delivery hours for bringing sheds in and out of the property will be limited to 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. No manufacturing allowed on the property. At six, if a category two through five hurricane comes to this area, the sheds will get tidied down.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Ankerson. That brings us to any public comments? Do we have any public comments regarding business agenda item number four? Come to the podium, take your first and last name, and you got three minutes.
My name is Donson Paulinett. I live 271 East Drive, Ocean Springs. I own the property at 2101 Old Spanish Trail. And appreciate the time, Mayor, Councilman. As you read, the county planning commission recommended approval with some stipulations. I just wanted to address two of the stipulations that are a little humorous. The first one is to strap the buildings down in the event of a Cat 2 hurricane. Expense and labor involved in doing that just makes the whole thing cost more hitting up. Can imagine how long it would take and how much material it would take to strap down 25 or 30 buildings. It would be astronomical in terms of cost for no purpose. The buildings are rated at 170 miles an hour, and the recommended not even to be anchored. If you do the calculation on how much wind it takes to move one of these things, the smallest one would be 218 miles an hour, the larger ones, 270 something miles an hour. So I would just request that we raise the threshold, at least the wind rating of the buildings to 170. And the other stipulation that I would ask you to reconsider is the decorative fence along Old Spanish Trail. If I did put a decorative, I've got a great eight-foot security fence, barbed wire, a 25-foot gate. It's cleaning up right now, getting it all done. I commit to you to make that right away as nice looking as any right away, so it's inviting from a tenant's business, of any commercial property along Old Spanish Trail. We're going to remove all the structure in the corner. We have some structures there that are ugly, we're going to get rid of those and just make it a much nicer property altogether. But the last thing that I'd just like to point out, the term traffic for this property, the two top dealers in this area sell just less than one shed per day. So we're not talking about a lot of traffic coming in and out. It's going to be very low traffic, huge publicly, lower than even self-storage. Which is not going to have a lot of traffic. We're not going to sell any sheds after dark, and will be great additions to the City of Goshay, hopefully.
Is that all you have, Mr. Molina? Okay, thank you so much. Any other public comments? Do we have a motion by council?
I'll make a motion that we approve planning commission's recommendations for approval with the following stipulations. Can we get back to where? I was looking at everything and, uh. Let's see, same with delivery time and sale opportunities or times of sales. The existing fence is to remain. If at such time as that fence is replaced, then it will be replaced with a decorative style fencing. I feel, you know, the issue with the tie-downs, and I understand these ones right here, they just should handle auger style tie-downs. I would say within a cat, to meet city code. The problem is, if we don't do a tie-down, how do we require somebody that sells that doesn't do a tie-down, but somebody gives a permit and not have a tie-down? So, I mean, it doesn't have to be a permanent fixed tie-down, they can be reused, auger style tie-downs and so forth. But I think we need to follow our current wind code on requiring for anchors of these type structures per our code and per MEMA and FEMA code and follow that stipulation. Last item was, since we're not replacing the fence, would you be amenable to adding just some minor shrubbery or foliage along the front property front that's low lying, just to try to make aesthetically pleasing?
If I can.
Just minimal, just something, just dress it up a little bit?
I'm not opposed to it, but you're welcome to come by and try to get a shovel in that ground. It is like cement, and I don't know how they got those magnolia trees that line the sides of the building in there. It is hard as a rock, and anything, I think, if you plant there, it's going to die. Happy to do it, but did I hear that you were going to require them to tie down the sheds? Happy to do it, but did I hear that you were going to require them to tie down the sheds?
I will say, follow what our planning commission and planning director, that our codes require for sheds for their acreage.
That's going to be too expensive and too cost prohibitive.
I don't think it's the same type of tie-down as what they're sort of thinking.
Yeah, we're talking anchor.
They're like just auger, like $13 for a, it was very inexpensive, an auger-style tie-down. It's not like a permanent tie-down that can be reused. It's just temporary, like not used all the time. It's like $13 for a thing, not a-
Talking about four, four per unit.
Yeah, right. State your name and address for the record.
Megan Strahan, 850 on the Greenwood, S. 300 Pepperd. Is it something that we're able to do? Because we don't know about the type.
Yeah, it's just an auger-style. I mean, I'm looking right here, 18-inch long round auger-style kit, a four-pack is $30. They make a two to put them in the ground.
Yeah, very inexpensive, not permanent.
That's requesting if there's a storm in the Gulf, then we need to go and tie them down. It's not something that's done all the time.
No, it doesn't have to be permanent.
Over certain wind rating?
Hold down the buildings.
Buildings aren't holding, 200 miles an hour.
Enough to hold down the buildings, but more or less, I mean, we've got to make sure, ensure that if we do have a major catastrophic storm, that these buildings don't blow off and hit adjoining properties and cause damage because that reflects poorly on the city and we're not enforcing our codes. So basically, what is necessary, these auger-style anchors that can be reused over and over again, they're not a permanent fixed anchor, just to hold down the buildings in the case middle.
They can turn it into that cement.
What was there before? Does anybody remember what used to be located there?
Eight tile, building's by sir.
Wade Doitt Center.
Wade Doitt, before that, I mean Wade Doitt Center, they, did it have rock in there?
Yes, there's rock in there.
And just to give you some flavor, they have some heavy-duty T-stakes around the magnolia trees. The first one I tried to pull out, but I didn't need it anymore, I used an 8,000 pound firejack and pulled it in half. There it is. I just said, to try to get something, they had to use heavy equipment to do that. I don't have good equipment. I'm afraid that if you start turning an auger in there, it's just going to, it's just not-
See what, I mean, like I said, it augers, I mean, it's, so long as the effort's there and if they drive by and see they're anchored, then I think that's going to be enough for them to support.
Thank you. Any other questions before I-
Hey, no, you're right, we're just putting, just a couple, trying to plant a couple of just shrubs, I mean, just low specials, just to dress it up.
Do they die? If they're going to die.
Couple of $10 pop plants at the gate. Yeah.
Okay.
All right. All right, so that was my motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Elbin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No discussion.
Councilman Gallott?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
We got a motion and a second, all in favor. Councilman George?
Aye.
Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business, and I just want to thank the stray hands, Mr. Mullinaw, but the stray hands, I thank y'all for investing and wanting to come to Gochay and we look forward to y'all's partnership. We got business agenda item number five, consideration of a special exception that would allow a duplex in an R3 mobile manufactured home residential zoning district located at 7717 Dahlia Drive, Gochay, Mississippi, GPC 24-34-SC by Planning Director Mr. Scott Anderson.
Yes, Mayor, the planning department has received this request from Louise Elias Mendoza of Fort Amelia for a special exception that would allow duplex in R3 low home manufactured home residential zoning district. Some background on the property, it's approximately 2.3 acres, the river, water and wastewater services available, the location, the comprehensive plans feature land use designation to this property is low home residential. I've included in the discussion section, the applicant's responses and staff findings to the special exception, the criteria is outlined in the ordinance. Also have included the definition of hardship from your view, the planning commission recommends the city council approve the special exception to the duplex. The city council may approve the special exception, approve the special exception or changes, or deny the special exception. I've included the minutes and the application through review and the attendance here, well, not changing.
Does that bring us, do we have any public comments on business agenda item number five? No? Do we have a motion by council to accept the planning commission's recommendation and approve a special exception that would allow duplex located in an R3 mobile manufactured home residential zoning district located at 7717 Dahlia Drive, Gochay, Mississippi, GPC 24-34-SC, PID number 85441243.000.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elbin, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elbin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
Can you build some more of these in that area when you get done with this one?
That was really nice.
That's all I have.
Councilman Gallott?
I'll ask you before the meeting. Actually, your proposed plan looks very good. I think that's going to be an approval to that particular area of the city. I thank you for taking the time to make the investment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
Louise, we just thank you for your investment here in Gochay and continue to help Gochay grow. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Elbin, all in favor. Councilman George?
Aye.
Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Councilman George?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number six, consider a request for a six-foot variance to side yard setback requirements for an accessory building and a one-foot variance to fence height in a front yard in a R1 low-density single-family residential zoning district located at 1715 Piney Lane, Gochay, Mississippi, GPC number 24-35-VAR by Planning Director Mr. Scott Anderson.
Yes, Mayor, the planning department has received this request from Roger Dulcich. The applicant would like to put a carport on the side of his house that would be four foot from the property line. Side yard setback requirement for an accessory building per the ordinance is 10 feet from the property line. Therefore, the applicant will need a six-foot variance. The applicant would also like to place a five-foot fence around this yard. A portion of the fence will be in the front of the yard, in front of the house. Per the unified bill of works, ordinance is fences shall not exceed four foot in height within the designated front yards. The applicant will need a one-foot variance for this fence height requirement in the front yard. Planning commission recommends the city council approve the variance presented for the fence height and the setback to the carport. The city council may approve the variance, approve the variance for changes, or deny the variance, depending upon the package. If the applicant's against my question, you may ask.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number six? Do we have a motion by council to approve, accept the planning commission's recommendation and approve the request for a six-foot variance to the side yard setback requirements for an accessory building and a one-foot variance to the height, fence height in a front yard in a R1 low-density single-family residential zoning district located at 1715 Piney Lane, Gochay, Mississippi, GPC number 24-35-VAR, PID number 85440148.000.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elbin, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elbin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
Oh, the fence, is that a see-through fence? Like the picture shows?
Yeah.
A see-through fence? That's all I got.
Anything else, Councilman College? Oh, Councilman Anderson?
That's all.
Councilman College?
Yeah, I just wanted a clarification on that, because I see the picture that shows steel pipe and it's got a top vertical and it looks like there's some wire, but then down below, it looks like you've got a pent fence, like black, four foot by 330 feet. So is that black fencing going to be between your posts?
Yes, sir.
It is? But it's visible through?
Yes, sir.
It is? Okay. I just wanted to make sure it's visible. Okay.
The dog distance is to be called, to walk over a wooden fence.
Yeah, well, I just, what the TEDx has, you had in here, the dimension shows four foot by 330 and if you're doing five foot, so I just wanted to verify that this, this type material, I guess, you probably get it in five-foot high planks also. So, I'd just like to record show that the applicant said this fence will be see-through. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Gallott?
No comments.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
We have a motion by Councilman College, second by Councilman Elbin, all in favor. Councilman George? Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number seven, approval of the docket of claims. The staff presentation was by the city clerk, they were presented online, accessible to the council and the general public. Any public comments on business agenda item number seven? Do we have a motion by council?
I'll make a motion, we approve the docket of claims, by that all entries there on are true, correct, properly entered and not fraudulent.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gallott, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elbin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson? I mean, College?
No comments.
Councilman Gallott?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
All in favor? Councilman George? Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our consent agenda, we approve them all in one motion unless a council member would like to pull one. Does anybody want to pull one? Nobody wants to pull one? So we will, I will call them out.
Can I have a, I'm in it?
Hold on, it's, we're, this is on agenda items. Is it one of the consent items?
It's item number one.
We already passed that.
I know that.
But you can talk-
I wasn't able to make it here, so I want to know what the decision is.
Okay, we'll tell you in just a moment. If you have a sec, we're still moving down our agenda, we'll get back with you. Consent agenda items one through 13 will be approved in one motion. One, approval of the minutes from regular council meeting, held September the 3rd, 2024, with changes. Two, receive August 2024 privilege license report. Chief Latch, will you get him to sign it, please? Three, resolution approving the sponsorship for the Jackson County Animal Shelter's 7th Annual Paddle for Cause Poker Float. Four, approval for renew a state rental agreement with RG Young, RJ Young for the rental of a new Rico IMC 3010 copier for the police department. Five, approval to renew a state rental agreement with RJ Young for the rental of a new Rico IMC 3010 copier for the fire department. Six, approval to renew a state rental agreement with RJ Young for the rental of a new R Rico IMC 4510 copier for the utility department. Seven, approval to renew a state rental agreement with RJ Young for the rental of a new Rico Pro, C5300 for City Hall Administration, and a BOGO for the planning department. Eight, authorization to approve the city of Gochay's vehicle and driver's safety policy. Nine, resolution adopting the district non-regional hazard mitigation plan. Ten, authorization to waive the pavilion rental fee at this George Martin City Park, Pavilion B for the First Methodist Church of Gochay's Bark in the Park and Blessing of the Pets event. Eleven, authorization to acknowledge and reject bid for the Shepherd State Park Bath House and Laundry Facility project. Twelve, approval of the limited use agreement between the city of Gochay and the Gochay Mullet and Music Festival and the sponsorship for the 2024 Gochay Mullet and Music Festival. Thirteen, appointment of the municipal public defender. Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda items one through 13? Motion by Councilman Gallott, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College, all in favor. Councilman George? Councilman Jackson? Motion carries. That brings us to our consent study agenda. First up is discuss citizen comments. You come to the podium, you state your first and last name, and you have three minutes. First up is Mr. Charles Moore.
I'm still on Russ Downey's, do you need your card?
Name and address, Mr. Moore.
Charles Moore, 822 West Gate Park, 10 minutes. I'm still asking Russ Downey to resign with the remarks he made about black people in here in Gochay and other places. None of them, okay. And Kim and Square on Victoria Drive, Russ Downey, you need to check that out, it's bad. Victoria Drive is bad over there. Got five holes everywhere.
Victoria, okay.
Kim and Square, check it out, it's bad. And I missed my old truck up on the way down. All right, if you don't mind.
I drove through there today, I didn't go to Victoria, but I did drive down Westgate Parkway. But I will, I'll drive through and look at it.
Gochay, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Leonard Fuller, thank you, Mr. Moore, Leonard Fuller.
Thank you, gentlemen, I had a package for you. I see that you don't have it. Maybe we'll come back again.
Mr. Fuller, if you-
Leonard Fuller, 3008 Oak Street, native Gochayan. Other than being drafted and sent to Germany, I've lived in Gochay all of my life. I've been with the city council lately. I'm a principal of the Gochay School and several in Collins Park School. I've been a member of the city council and I have represented the historical commission for the past 30 years. That's one of the items I want to bring up, but I had several items for you and, but I don't have three minutes.
Well, Mr. Fuller, I can answer if you want. Ms. Nancy was going to get and set up a meeting with you and then get with the council. So that's why you're not on the agenda tonight. So Ms. Babs had provided it to Ms. Nancy and she's going to reach out to you and schedule a meeting. So that's what, that's why it's not on the agenda for this evening.
Okay, I'll come back then. I hope y'all got your new book. This is the revised history of Gochay. I'd like for you to make sure you, I require you to read it.
Where can we, where can we get that book at?
Babs have some for sale, Councilman Anderson, Babs here.
You should have put them out, out there. But I wondered, let me bring up one item though that I need for y'all to look at. The, the, restore the barrel place of the founding fathers of city Fernando Gochay. He is interned in the Gochay Historical Cemetery on of 90 and Oak Street. The barrel site has been fallen in, bald-making to places. The barrel site has been a very popular, historical-minded people have been visiting there. The barrel site represents the entire city. Now, the question we had was private property, but I looked that up in the state tax law, you might check on me. Public funds can be used for private use, not for the benefited individual, but is used for the good of the citizens of the city. So if the city would recommend that this barrel site is a historical barrel site, it would be considered a public area. We would like to maintain that barrel site because that is our city founder's place. So we could, we could use public funds for that barrel site, as far as I've looked it up. All right, I'll come back later.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller, and I'm blessed to have Mr. Fuller as my principal in all my elementary school years at Gochay Elementary School. And thank you for serving as an elected official here, Mr. Fuller, and serving on the Gochay Historic Commission. We appreciate your volunteerism and your continued commitment to Gochay and its historic history. I'm going to ask that the staff scan and email this to the whole council. I'm gonna ask that the staff scan and email this to the whole council. Also, that would be a donation for the book. We cannot sell the book, so please, if you want to come, get one. The price of a book is a donation and we can't legally sell those. So, I want to clarify that for the record. Next up is Tom Nichols. If you come to the podium, take your first and last name and address. I'll try to answer something you had, Mr. Nichols.
My name is Tom Nichols. I live at twenty-eight oh four Fairview Drive. Unless you deliver for Delo, for Delano's, then I'm at twenty-eight oh four Fairway. Just saying. But I wanted to be here to find out what they're gonna do with the property next.
We, we voted to abate it, so that was, we will move forward on cleaning the property up.
Okay. Because the sign in the yard said, the meeting started at seven o'clock. I got here at seven o'clock, it had already been decided.
I apologize, the meeting started at six thirty. If it's, I apologize.
I'm fine with that. As long as it's gone, I'm good.
And you have some neighbors back here that were, came in afterwards, but we were in the process and then it got approved. Enough of y'all had complained in that area about.
Now, another issue that I have with that road is we got potholes, poor drainage, and flooding almost every time it rains. But nobody comes down when it's, after it's rained. I'm working on getting the eight one one crew to figure out where everything goes for the whole road up to the corner. Because we get people running the stop sign at Fenita and that road.
Lots of them.
And we do not have to stop. But we slow down because we know they're not gonna stop. And they come around the corner. We've had five dogs killed on that corner because they don't slow down coming out. The sign's been run over, the fence has been run through, everything at the end of the needle. But the main problem is the drainage. There's no drains there whatsoever. So, I really would love for the city to look into the drainage on that.
We will.
Come up with a plan.
We will. And Mr. Nichols and our public works director right by here and our public work service provider, H2O, they're both taking notes and listening now, so they will be glad. And your information is on here, so they will reach out to you also to follow up.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming. I hate you missed the item, but it was in your favor like you want it. Do we have any other citizen comments that might have forgot to sign in?
I didn't sign in, but I.
Stand up, state your first and last name.
My name is Jimmy Zenick. I would like to offer to Gochay.
State your address, Mr. Zenick.
Seventy-five hundred Lake Ridge Drive, Ocean Springs. About a year ago, I became a thickaholic and started growing thick trees. I would like to offer to Gochay for thick trees to plant somewhere on city property. So, if somebody wanted to come up and get a bid, they could. Hey, last year since I started to look thick rich, there's fifteen hundred people in my group on Facebook. And I'd just like to offer it. In Ocean Springs, in June, they have a blueberry festival. Maybe Gochay, that's part of their activity, could have a festival.
Okay.
Summer months.
Well, we.
Birds love them.
Yeah, and we appreciate you offering that, Mr. Zenick. We will get with the recreation director and them to get with you. If you can wait and leave your numbers, since I'll give this back to you. You can fill it out and they will contact you because we have some blueberry bushes already planted at our senior center at City Park and that mixture would probably tie in or if she sees fit somewhere else.
Walking trail there would be nice.
Uh huh. And we can adopt them and let you donate them, but we'll put it on the agenda.
Besides D, the first three letters is D, not bite.
Good. Well, we're glad you came to offer something to us and thank you for your investment here. That brings us to our city manager comments. I asked that you please, she's not here this evening. She is on family business and then the family stuff. And so, we also would like to wish her an early, early, happy, happy birthday. And I hope her day on Monday is as festive and sparkly and funky as she is. So, our city manager is not here, but in her stead, we have our planning director, Mr. Scott Anderson. Do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
City clerk? Ms. Montgomery does not have anything. Ms. Durdenos? And we need to go back to council comments. It's councilman Elbin, do you have anything?
Just want to thank our city employees for the work you do each and every day to make our city run efficiently. Couldn't do it without you. That goes just as, just as well for our contract employees as well. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson?
No comments.
Councilman College?
Just echo what councilman Elbin said. Same with our residents of the city that are always participating or try to participate and donate their time to the city.
Thank you. Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
He's not holding.
No comment.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
Thank you. And I just want to echo what councilman Elbin, councilman College said. And then also just remind you all, please support our three businesses that are supporting the Songwriters Festival this weekend. That will be Azteca's Restaurant and Cantina, also Cornerstone, and also Hickory Hills Golf Course. So, please support them on Friday and Saturday.